But this time, we'll have the district get a chance to respond to some of the comments. If you wanted to have-
Yeah, sure. I'll have Mr. Wall and Mr. Andrews come up as I'm commenting a couple. We'll have Ms. Farage also reach out to Ms. Martin to set up a meeting and address her concerns.
One of the items this is in regards to is Salina and the request for the rain collection. I wanted to let you know that we did receive and have a chance to read through all the emails as well.
So before Mr. Wall speaks, you know, one of the things with the, so there is requirements under ESER allowable expenses. One of the things when we're doing HVAC upgrades too, it's also the heating that's important. So we're looking at boilers and other things, which are things that would have been in the 2019 bond, and otherwise, we have to use other funding. So we're trying to implement projects that will save tax, local taxpayers when, you know, the fielding study may come out and what do we need to do with the district our size? So even $100 million, I know is a lot of money, but with a large district, we have a list, as I know Mr. Wall has presented, that is a lot more than that. So what we, what we did with a lot of the HVAC, and the board may recall, and Mr. Wall can speak to it as well, is that with Salina in particular, it was one of the first ones where we took general fund dollars that we put in several years ago for air conditioning upgrades and enhanced filtration system. So when we went for HVAC across the district, we, and I know went through the, all the processes and committees and everything, we vetted it out, we had a hearing here at the board meeting with the ESER that we were required to do. And the decision was because we did have the largest summer programs in the district, that we were going to start at the elementary level. And I know, you know, the, the single level schools, because of the money, also with inflation and that, we had some issues with how far it would go. And so, you know, that was a decision by the district. We were looking at the different levels, and we were trying to take care of projects because we know other buildings will have to be added at some point through one financial means or another. So I'll let Mr. Wall and Mr. Andrews comment. I just wanted to give that kind of overview.
So, Mr. President, members of the board, where would you like me to start? Which one do you want me to talk about first?
Your choice.
My choice? All right, on the air conditioning, trying to be very transparent on this money, we actually put an interactive page on the website through communication to actually show which buildings have air conditioning, what parts of the building. Even when we look at the money that we're spending currently or going to be spending on ESER III funds, those buildings won't have entire air conditioning either. When you look at the map, you'll see most of our newer schools are on the, lack of better term, east side of the district. And on the east side, if you look at the map, you know, majority of the schools already have air conditioning. You know, one of the things we did back in 1415, we had money from AK Steel, they said they wanted to put back into the community. We took that money and did air conditioning on the, I believe, third floor first, third floor first at Salina Intermediate. Salina Elementary is already fully air conditioned. We took that money along with our own money and started that process. In 2018, 19, we got a little bit, about 100,000, 175,000 from AK Steel again, and we put the remaining air conditioning in most of the building at that time. So we spent roughly about 2.3 million over six years on air conditioning at Salina Intermediate. You take the rate of inflation, that is equivalent to about 3.3 million in today's dollars. So when you look at the comparability to what we're doing at some of the other buildings, it's close to that, that same number. And when we looked at it, we made a discussion, as Dr. Lomelco said, to look at the elementary schools first. Younger kids are more susceptible to heat than high school kids, so that's why we started there. I don't know if you want to add anything to that part, Mark?
Okay.
Any question, Trustee Petlicoff?
I just want to make it clear to everybody who's listening, the money that's being discussed right now is limited as to what we can do with it. These aren't monies that we can just go into buildings and just, and replace roofs and do this and that. They're really basically concentrated on air filtration systems, HVAC, heating, and that type of renovations. It's got nothing to do with the other issues that a lot of our buildings are struggling with. And that's why we're talking about these kinds of funds going to that, because they, they do have restrictions.
Right, and we relied on the architect, we have done an infrastructure study for the district since 1819, and the recent, most recent one came out in last year around this time, and we were talking about another bond issue. The architects took that information, and they went through the buildings and walked all the buildings also to determine which buildings they thought was the highest need for air conditioning at the elementary level. That's how those buildings were chosen. It wasn't based on east side, west side, just the greatest need at the buildings, because some of them are older than others, so that's why we kind of came across that list, and that's why we focus on those schools for Bid PAC 1 and Bid PAC 2.
Any other questions or comments?
All right.
Mr. Wall, real quick, when you mentioned Salina and intermediate, you have to put a percentage on it. What percent of that building is air conditioned?
So if you go by floors, then I would say two-thirds. The first floor doesn't have air conditioning, but we put it on the third floor, second floor, and the cold air will drop. So that was the theory behind it when they designed it, and why they chose to do the third and second floor first.
Do we have any plans? At what point do we get to the first floor? Let me tell you why I'm asking, because Trustee Petlicoff is 100% correct on this, that we can only spend this money. Talk about air quality, I mean, that's, that's definitely falls into, into that category, so.
Yeah, so I can expand a little bit on the air and filtration system at both those schools. They're the best that we have in the district, they're electrostatic. And even the ones that we're designing right now, it's not going to be as good as the ones that are in both Salina buildings.
So-
But as far as air conditioning go, until we get a future budget, we wouldn't be able to install any more air conditioning there.
Can we then say, though, that we are testing the air quality inside of our buildings at Salina? So we would know whether it was sufficient at this point in time, I'm assuming, with, with what has been installed to, to this point?
So there's two meas, there's two measures that we test air quality. One is if we receive a complaint, and that's more specific. So it'd be more of a room or a couple rooms. And we also have a five-year plan where we try to get through all of our buildings. We try to do the Salina buildings every year, just because of the area that, that the building is located. We didn't do it during COVID, because in order to test the air, it has to be fully occupied. And so we're working right now to get some more testing done before the end of this heating season.
Are we continuously testing the building, or is it-
We try to, we, depending on the size of the buildings, we try to do about five or six a year.
Five or six buildings?
Buildings, correct.
So are we testing? Are we testing, sorry. Playing musical chairs here. So, best case scenario, we're testing Salina one time that year.
We try to do, moving forward, I can't speak frozen in the past, but moving forward, we've decided to test Salina both schools every year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Trustee Mosip?
Well, one thing is, the current map says the entire building is air conditioning or air conditioned, but from the information that we all know, that not the entire building is air conditioned, so that has to be corrected. Another thing is, it's evident and known that it area in Dearborn has the worst air quality, if not in the, in the state. So if we're looking at elementary buildings and we're saying which one should get AC, Salina should be the first from talking about equity and, and making sure that our students are safe because of the proximity that they have to the toxic air quality in that location. So, I'm very saddened that only that figure was allocated to the school, and if there is still more money in the ESER funds that we're still having, I hope that will be dedicated to getting the intermediates some AC, and those floors that don't have AC.
Anything else, Trustee Mosip?
That's all.
Trustee Watts?
So going back to the testing, is it advantageous to test in the winter versus the summer?
Correct, it's best to do it during what we call heating season.
Okay.
I think we need to take a look at Salina again, because what Trustee Mosip is referring to, I can tell you a little bit of history on that. On my block alone, nine women passed away from cancer, one being my mother. So that area over there is definitely, definitely, it is an issue there, so. And you know what, we keep talking about, you know, AK Steel and the grant it gave us, Mr. Nessar B. Doon is here tonight, so we're very thankful for him and his team for starting that conversation. But this, this is a very serious conversation. It's not just somebody's coming up to the podium with emotions, or maybe a couple board members with some emotion. This is serious, so. We're going that way. We want to get all of our elementaries, and we're going to concentrate on our middle schools, and we are going in that direction finally, but Salina needs to look at, please, thank you.
Just one other, so I take, thank you for your feedback on that, that I know when we did the second phase, we actually had to do some replacement of lights and all that because of electrical load. We actually had to do a lot of electrical savings at that time, be able to do what little we did, you know, for the second, second phase. So thank you for that information.
No, I'm not saying, I know, I know, so thank you, so, but, but moving forward, maybe we need to give a little bit, little bit extra attention to that area, because we know, I mean, I can say I know, when it comes to air quality, it's probably the worst in the city, so, thank you.
What I would ask is, while we know that this line area is heavily industrial, do we have any other schools that are also in industrial areas that we should also be looking at the air quality and making sure that, that we're not having any difficulties there? I don't know if that was brought up when I was out.
We'll look into that, too, just, just validate it, yep.
Okay.
So on the second issue-
Yes.
All right, on the second issue, because I'm kind of talking about air quality, I've had many conversations through email. I asked to have for, you know, a phone call or something to that effect. They said, nope, they want everything through email. Unfortunately, that's a very slow process. I asked, that we're obviously responsible for the air quality inside of our buildings. On the outside of the buildings, it's, it's more of a city issue, because we don't control the air on the outside. The process has been slowed down, because I've asked them if they reached out to the city to get the city involved, dealing with air quality, or even the, you know, the state, because we have a testing system there. They said no. And they basically refused to do so. And I said, once the city has their chance to weigh in, where they want to participate, then obviously if they said no, then we would get back involved. So we kind of bogged down on that for a little bit, and then I said, well, since you don't want to move, I'll reach out to the city. I did reach out to the city, I did get a response today, so I'll, you know, sit down with our administration and talk about their city's response, and I'll get back to the individual.
Any question?
The question was on rainwater, not air quality.
Correct. Right, so rainwater is, I believe the rainwater is testing to see what kind of air pollutants are kept gathering in the rainwater, and so I said that we don't control that aspect. You're better off-
I don't think neither the city does. I don't think the city does any air quality tests whatsoever.
I don't know that, so that's why I asked them to reach out to the city first, because they would have more information than I would on that situation.
Who has the data collection site? Who controls that one that's already on the building?
The state does.
It's the state?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Trustee Petlicoff?
I, I, I would assume that the, the rain coming out of the sky, the, if the bucket was on the sidewalk outside of the school building on public property, would be the same, coming down through the same quality of air that's on the other side of the fence, correct?
I'm not an expert in that area.
I'm not an expert either, I'm just assuming that if, if, if they wanted to collect the water, they could probably just stick it on the other side of the building and not be on our property.
Yep, I do believe they said they were in a partner with another firm that might have more information on how to do that. I want to just make sure whatever is gathered, that obviously it fits some sort of scientific process to measure, the pollutants or something to that effect.
I see you there, but we're not going to have a complete conversation, not, not you, Mark, behind you. Make sure everyone's got each other's contact information, so we can keep working on this and be able to resolve it.
Yes, I am offering myself to answer any questions that the board may have regarding this matter.
Not at this point. Thanks. Any additional items from citizen participation that we wanted to, oh, the bullying item? And this has been one that we've heard about over the last couple of years, people coming with, I can think of one with religious issues. Whatever we can do to make our students realize that what their, their actions and their words hurt others, we need to be doing as a district. In the past, we've held things, and I know PBIS is still going on, Care to the Core, call it whatever you will, but Dr. Lomelco, do we have coordinated district-wide events going on to help educate our students?
The Care to Core is coming up, but we can continue to move on items. We're open to, you know, working with our staff. I had a conversation with Dr. Swed, and I know Mr. Salee, I believe he just had a meeting on this topic, so we're working on, you know, different items, but Care to the Core would definitely be one.
Are there still, do we try to do like restorative circles in certain situations like this as well?
Yeah, restorative practice, we continue to move on, and we have the trainers as well.
Absolutely, we became a restorative district in 2016 was our first implementation phase. That is when we trained actually 10 trainers of trainers. It is still something that we practice regularly. I know Dr. Violet Swedon will go into specific buildings and train staff on restorative practices. In addition to that, it's something that we just went through with our school social workers as well. Now, restorative practices is more of a framework, too. The circle's a great part of it, it's an integral part of it, but it's also how we treat each other in the building with empathy and kindness as well.
And we can always work, strive to do better. I mean, we know that, and we understand the concerns, and that's why we want to continue to improve in this area.
Trustee McDonald?
When we first did our response to bullying behavior many years ago, and I was very involved in that, we did have a district-wide event at the beginning of the school year, just as a reminder to get everybody on board and, and to understand the importance of this, and then put it in the front of their mind at the beginning of the school year. And I believe Trustee Mosip had dedicated October as anti-bullying month, so that would fall in line with the beginning of the school year. I know that at one time, we were doing events at every single building related to anti-bullying or our response to bullying behavior, and I just think that that's so important, just to keep it in front of students' minds, to keep people aware, and just to, to set the climate. We also had, and I don't know if we still do, we had all of the Be an Upstander posters around the buildings, and I can't remember seeing one, I may, I know there is one here, yeah, right there on the wall, but at one time, I would see them everywhere, I'd even see them in businesses in the neighborhood, and it just seemed that the community was pulling together. And when you keep something like that in front of mind, then it does encourage somebody to be that upstander, not just in the building, but on their playground near their house, or when they're, they're out and about, or when they see something that doesn't sit well with them, they will say something. So I think that it's just important that we need to set the tone and make sure that those kind of things are happening in our building, just to make sure students are, keep it in mind, as well as administrators, as well as teachers, and that that sets the climate and the tone for not just the buildings, but the entire community.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, going back to that event, we used to have, that employee that used to run that event is no longer with us, that does not mean that we can't revisit that. We had a discussion here at this board about revisiting that, and COVID happened, but I think we need to revisit it again and see if there's support from the board for an event like that. A comment on what was mentioned earlier, Kathy, never feel that your responsibility to this district is more important than your son. I'm not saying that's the vibe I picked up, but that's, I can share with you, yes, you're right, it's not about your daughter, or my son, or her daughter, or his son, it's about all of our daughters and our sons. My son in the middle school for two and a half years, his mother and I went back with the district, back and forth, back and forth, and I was trying to play that, you know, hey, I gotta be careful what I do here, when, when finally, the assistant principal at that middle school told the boys that were bullying my son, that, oh, look, now he's talking to his mother, his mother's calling me every day, so not only he was being bullied, now he's being labeled as a tattletale. Moving him to a different middle school, put him on a springboard to have the greatest four years in high school at Dearborn High. I mean, other than he was one of the 2020 graduates, he had a great experience, made a lot of friends, kids loved him, whatever, just that one semester in a different environment made the difference in his life, he's very, very productive, doing some great things. Never feel that, any parent out there, never feel that you have to apologize for looking out for your son or daughter. Thank you.
Just wanted to add too, and I just, Dr. Bazey Gates had also read, we had some events in the middle schools on a proactive, it's called Sports World with Mr. Kirchner, and we actually had a former Super Bowl champion that was coming and speaking to some of the students I had gone to, and it was really, with some of the middle schools is where we started, so there were some of that that was going on in the fall, well, and it was addressing specific bullying behaviors. And we did have good feedback from those events.
What I would add is that, as board members, we lead by example. So when we are in our board meetings or out in public, make sure that we are treating others with respect, even when we're here at the board meetings, yes, we can be, be very passionate about the things that we care about, but always make sure that you're being respectful and listening to the others. The other thing that I would mention that was in a couple of the comments was about the organizational meeting. We are going to be talking about the organizational meeting in a study session that is scheduled for the 28th of February, where we talk about the way we do elections amongst other bylaws and policies that the board has a chance to share their feelings before we start moving forward with everything else. And with that, next item.
Action items? Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Trustee Mosip?
I'd like to exclude number three, please, for a separate vote.
All right, number three. Any other items to exclude for a separate vote, or questions on any other action items? All right. Trustee Watts, if you could go ahead with the-
Move, yep, move the action items numbered 1 through 14, be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of number three.
So move.
Forward.
Motion made by Trustee Dambrosio, supported by Trustee Petlicoff. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh. Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right.
I didn't want to pull, but I want to, want to visit number 13.
Okay.
Bylaw 0167.3, public participation at board meetings. I want to be very clear, I read this over and over and over, we're making our citizen participation a little bit stronger, we are becoming a little bit more welcoming. I don't want people to think out there that we're listening to outside forces and trying to limit citizen participation, just wanted to put that out there, just a comment, no question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on any item before we move forward? All right, all in favor of agenda items 1 through 14 with the exception of three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. And if you can then go back to number three.
Number three.
Read the recommended action.
Move that the board approve the comprehensive performance-based energy conservation program resolution prepared by legal counsel per board report 22-81.
So move.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I'll go with Trustee McDonald. Trustee Mosip, questions on it?
Yeah, I had this question earlier for Tom, but I just want it for clarity, because the current language states that Train USA is the lowest responsible bidder for the project, but when asked, they were the only bidder. So the language here is probably misleading to myself or to anybody reading this, that, thinking that multiple firms have applied for this bid when there was only one, one firm. And then, last meeting, I asked about, is, is that enough time for firms to bring forward some bids for this project? I was told it was, but only conversations, if you want to retell that.
Right, so the lowest responsible bidder is a legal term. That means we have vetted them, that they've actually met our qualifications of our RFP, and the lowest means that's just, since we only have one, they're, they're considered the lowest also. So a lowest responsible bidder is just a legal term to say, well, how we reward bids and for, under the School Aid Act and for purchasing. So that's why it doesn't allude to there's more than one, it's just a legal term. We did put this out for about a month, and we normally do two weeks for bids, we actually did a month on this one, just because it followed right after the holiday, you want to make sure. So as by law, we did advertise in the paper, we advertise on the state website, which all firms have access to, and a lot of the bigger firms do. We did get a conversation with Johnson Controls, who is also an ESCO provider, they looked at the RFP, and a couple days later, they said they were not interested in bidding at this time. So we did have interest from other people that we didn't contact directly, so we know that was out there. Once we got the bids in, we still have what we call a follow-up bid meeting with the vendor to go through their bid, to make sure it makes sense to us and it meets our qualifications. That was done, and therefore we move forward. What you're approving today is for us to work with legal counsel to develop a contract. As you're probably well aware of, that any kind of energy contract with a performance guarantee is very complicated, because they have to go through and vet what, to make sure that the savings that are quoted in the project, be able to fund the project, because this is a, a project that the savings from what work they will do will pay off the bond. So that's what, where this money comes from. So that's a lot of legal lease that has to be going through that both sides are comfortable about what, the performance contract is a guaranteed contract, because if it's not met, they have to pay us money back for what they do. So this is the first step in the process, is to recognize that ESCO agent that we're working with will be trained. If we have a falling out on the contract, it's a moot point, we just walk away, both parties walk away. That's why the, the contract or the resolution today is to work with legal counsel to get to that point. Once we get to that point, we then work with our financial consultants, will be PFM, which we use to use for bonds. So if we get to that point, at the March meeting, you'll actually have another resolution to approve the energy bond, and that's when the board will actually approve the bond to be sold to fund the project.
Is that also when we are going to have the numbers, as far as the actual numbers? Because right now, we do have three-
Right, we're going to continue to work through that, because they bid a base bid, and they have alternate one and alternate two. Alternates one and two require us to contribute money to the project, but unfortunately, right now, we don't have a lot of money just sitting aside, and we haven't got to that point yet. So right now, we're looking at just alternate, or the base bid, and we're going to have further conversations with them, as maybe they can tighten their numbers, and we'll see where we go from there. That's all part of the negotiations with the legal contract. But you're basically given the administration at this point to work towards that, that final contract with the ESCO provider, which you just trained.
Kind of those are all the questions that I have, thank you.
Any additional questions? So, Mr. Wall, this is really just the next step in the process as we're moving forward with this possible project?
Correct. Right, so you're basically given the authority to Dr. Lomelco or his designated, which may be me, which is most likely me, to kind of continue to work through the process, to make sure that we're all comfortable with the numbers, and a legal contract can be signed by both parties.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, we've had this item moved by Trustee Petlicoff, supported by Trustee McDonald. Any additional discussion before we vote on it? Hearing none, could we get a roll call vote on this?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? President Thorpe?
Yes.
Summary of agenda items? Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Logisoft. Number three, approval of comprehensive performance-based energy conservation program resolution per board report 22-81. Number four, approval of an award to Advantage Mechanical Group per board report 22-82. Number five, approval of an award, approval of an award to Tarex Government Programs. Number six, approval of an award to Shoreview Electric per board report 22-83. Number seven to 10, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 11, approval of financial statement. Number 12, approval of January 2023 graduates. Number 13, approval of policy slash bylaw updates slash change, changes per board report 22-89. And number 14, approval of donations.
Thank you. Next item?
Discussion items, there are none.
What I would ask for, I mentioned earlier, that on February 28th, we are scheduled to have a study session regarding policies and bylaws that the board would like to revisit as a whole before we start sending things back to the policy committee to talk about individually. Trustee Mosip sent me something earlier today on the bylaw regarding vacancies, including some- including some verbiage. So I thank you for that one. I don't know if you shared it with the rest of the board, but if you could email it out to everybody, so we have an idea of what you're thinking on that one.
Sure.
I mentioned earlier about the organizational, the organizational meeting, specifically the election of officers. This was something that we had talked about in a session that we had in December, after the college board meeting. Also about the, the timing of the organizational meeting, because there was some talk about, do we keep it in January? Do we switch it to July? At this point, are there other bylaws or policies the board would like to discuss as a whole on the 28th? This isn't a last call, so to speak, but I would like everyone to have a chance to know what we're going to be talking about prior to that meeting on the 28th.
I do have a couple, but I don't have them in front of me right now.
I told trustee Moses I was thinking about the same bylaw that he had brought up.
Okay.
Uh, just-
You have a deadline?
Yeah.
That you want them by?
We'll, we'll need it for the agenda, and I'm looking for Mr. Mustin, and because you're gonna kind of be the, the master of ceremony, since we'll be talking policy things. When do you think would be enough time for you to gather everything together? Is one week enough, you think?
I think one week is plenty for me to gather the information that you'll need. There are some rules we need to follow for Open Meetings Act, as far as getting agenda items together and then posting that information. So I'll defer to Ms. Harris for that. But as far as getting the information to me to get together, a week is plenty.
Okay. So a week from tonight?
Well, we got the college meeting on the 20th. I, I still think we're probably okay on the 21st.
Okay, 21st. Thank you.
So you have things over by the 21st. Trustee Watts?
There was just some, some other policies that we were looking at, that I think for a couple of months, we've just been ruminating. I don't know if you want me to send that out to everyone else, or just to look back at the minutes for what those were. One was dress code, one was to look at the Dearborn Education Foundation, what the permission, the vote, so things like that.
Take a look and see if it's something that you think we should bring back to the full board. And if we list it on the meeting, but we don't get to it, is that okay? Or do we, all right. So it could be down the list if, if we don't think it's as, as pressing? Anything else in regards to that meeting on the 28th? And that'll be back in here, and it's gonna be a 5:30 start time. All right, next item then. Thank you all.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgment of correspondence.
Trustee Petlicoff.
This is in line with our talk about bullying. We did get an email from a concerned individual about bullying with the LGBTQ community, students, and their concerns, and some suggestions that they offered as well. So this goes along with our concentration on how we approach bullying, continue to approach. It's a, it's a never-ending problem, unfortunately.
Trustee Barry.
I was gonna mention the same email. Well, all eight of us got it. I don't know if everybody got a chance to take a look at it. I know a couple of months ago, I asked for, to see if bullying is on the rise in our district. Maybe we can update that report. Dr. Maliko, please.
Any other correspondence? As the normal course of business, as emails come in, I will send responses. They're not always the most detailed, because we usually need administration and more information that we're gonna provide, but we'll at least let you know that we have heard you and that we're working on things. Also, the board received word earlier today regarding a previous FOIA request, and we are accepting the appeal, which means it's gonna go back to administration to determine the next steps. It'll, and it will be on the agenda for the March board meeting. Next item?
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
I have one to report. Tonight, we started to review financial, the capital improvement program, the dashboard report, which also can be reviewed on the school website. And then in our March board meeting, Mr. Wall will present our budget.
Anything additional?
That's it, Mr. President.
Any other board or committee reports? Next item?
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee McDonald.
I just wanted to share something with all of you. You may have gotten some information on it. Sometimes you're not aware, you don't look at it. Being part of the Wayne County Association of School Boards Executive Committee, I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware, we will be having, again, some CBA classes that have been scheduled, that instead of going to Lansing, they will be headed, or they will be available at Wayne Risa. And there's two of them on March 9th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. One of them is CBA 103, which is basic school finance. Another one is CBA 360, which is a new one, I believe. It's called Risa. What can they do for our district? The two that are going to be held on March 16th, again, from 6:00 to 9:00, the CBA 276, it's Board Superintendent Relations, and CBA 350, which is general, or generational diversity for school board members. Now, just a reminder too, not only is this local, so we don't have to do a lot of traveling, Wayne County Association of School Boards does reimburse anyone interested in these classes 50% back. So it's a little cheaper, it's close to, and I recommend if anyone's interested, you can sign up. If you're not sure how to sign up, you can let me know, give Joanna a call. I also just wanted to say with Wayne County Association of School Boards, we are having a general meeting on this Thursday, although I go there as a member of the exec board. The general meetings start at 6:30, and they're usually very informational. They get a lot of information from, from Lansing, and just things that are happening in districts around the, the area. So if anyone's interested, I usually do like to come back and give a little synopsis of what happened, but there's a good opportunity to meet with other school board members in this area.
Trustee McDonald, I'm possibly putting you on the, all right, I'm not putting you on the spot anymore. On April 27th, we are gonna be hosting in the Dearborn District, a recognition dinner. You might be better at explaining what, what this is gonna be.
Okay. For Wayne County, we, they always hold a, a, Michigan Association of School Boards Awards Dinner. And members of school boards in Wayne County will be given awards for CBA classes, for status that they received. As you, as you learn things, you get different credentials as a school board member. And they like to move it throughout the, the county. So this is Dearborn. We have volunteered to do it this year. It's a really nice event, and it gives us an opportunity to showcase some of the things that we're doing in our district. And it also gives a, an opportunity for members of school boards around the, the county to bring their guests and celebrate their accomplishments, and school boards in general. So.
And we're gonna be hosting it at Fortson High School. And for those that were not at the fielding event at Fortson, if you saw the architects kind of going gaga over that building, that really tells you how special it is, when, when people that are in the profession just keep raving about that. So we're looking forward to showing off one of our gems for that event. Trustee Watts?
At the beginning of the meeting, we had said that there was a translator, translator on hand. Could we at the next board meeting or going forward, have a report as to all of the translations that we are doing for the parents and for all the community members going forward? Not only if they are attending our meeting, but just communications that are going home, and if there's any improvement that we can make.
All right. You got that one? Did you need to respond to that part?
Sure, I can respond. So just one thing, we also, I appreciate that suggestion. We are also looking to enhance during our board meetings or other times. So we have these, Congresswoman Talib had actually recommended this, and David's been in contact. So we're purchasing electronic, real-time with Ms. Kodama, who does a great job translating in, in the district, so that it'd be real-time. And they, we're supposed to arrive in February, but with everything we know is always backed up, as we talked about some of the other supplies. So now, the target date is March. So that'll be one area where we can improve things at the board meeting and for other things. But I think that we are leaders with what we do in the buildings with translation, and we always look to improve. So I-
Could we take those, like, for instance, for town halls? Can we bring those-
Sure.
-devices to town halls as well?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, David's nodding, so. And I had two other things that I'm, can I just go or do you want?
Hold on to it for a second.
Okay, we'll wait.
Write it down, so you don't forget.
Yeah.
All right, trustee Barry.
Yeah, Dr. Maliko, going back to Reed by the third grade, in June of 2019, we had a, we had a report on the subject. And it was reported to us that 29 third-grade students in the district would be subject to retention, but they're all good candidates for a good cause exemption, which I believe all 29 did receive that exemption. So my question is, if my math is right, those students would be seventh graders right now? So we do have a lot of data on them. Where are they? You know, what's going on in their lives? But I would like to take it a step further and ask you for the, so part of that, you know, that says here, based on the cut score of 1252, let's just put that on the side. I want to see the bottom 30%, 30% of that group, they were third graders. I'd like, as a seventh grader this year, I'd like to see what their grade point average is, how many days they missed school the previous year, and are they on track to graduate?
So that's all pertaining to those 30 students that-
Well, the 30 students, yeah, I would like to see. I mean, those are students that we, most of us here who sit at the table are responsible for, just because we got them an exemption. And I get it. Again, I get it. You know, you don't want to hold students back, but what is the other option? You know, what, what is the stigma of the discussion I had earlier? So it's not just that those 29 third graders, the bottom 30%, Dr. Maliko. So there was, yeah, so when it came to reading-
Okay.
These 29 would-
Across the district.
Across the district.
Okay.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
You, you clear on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we on request for information, I'm assuming?
I didn't, no, I didn't think we were, but-
Okay.
You, you jumped the gun.
Okay.
I apologize. Someone, either the secretary or the president should have straightened me out.
Nah, you were, you were rolling. We didn't want to mess with it.
I appreciate that.
Trustee, because I'm about to backtrack as well. Trustee Petlicoff, I heard you saying something earlier about beginning to organize a city relations committee meeting. In the past, there had been a call for the board to let know anything that we would want discussed at that. Once you start to have a date planned, just make sure that the rest of us know.
Oh, yeah, I always reach out to everyone.
Okay. Just, just thought about that a moment ago.
Tom Wall is salivating somewhere. She's always got a request.
All right. Any other commentary before we move on? Next item?
Request for information and or-
Oh.
Sorry, one thing, just the Mardi, I'm sorry, the Mardi Gras, I just wanted to promote. It's on the 21st at 4:30 with the Ed Foundation. And it's, this year, it's at the old Bravo in the Fairlane Town Center. So just, there's still tickets available. I'll be there. Hopefully we see you. Oh, I see you put it up on the screen, so great. Thank you.
That'll be a busy night.
So after you've gotten your bylaw and policy suggestions to us, you can go celebrate with Fat Tuesday.
And then that's the same night as the college collage concert.
The collage concert is also that even.
Oh, is that? Yes.
We might be splitting duties. All right, next item.
You sure? Request for information and or future agenda items.
We've got the one from trustee Barry. Trustee McDonald.
Yeah, I hear often, and, and if you look around, civility is lacking. And like we talked about, bullying and things, in this district, I was so proud of the strides that we had made. And, and just, but around the country, that's an issue. But I also hear a lot of times that just civics in general is not taught in schools. And civics is kind of like the duties and responsibilities of being in a U.S. citizen. So, so my concern or my, my thought is, I'd like to know, what exposure do our students have in civics education at every level? And is it true? Because I just hear that blanket statement all the time, none of our students are ever taught civics anymore. So I want to know if there's some exposure on those, the duties and responsibilities of being a good citizen at the elementary level and going forward. And what do we do? What do we learn? What do we instill in our students? And what do we expect from them? So.
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
I think going back to the bullying and listening to the, and hearing that you're asking for suggestions with city relations, I think that we need to think larger, because it's not just our schools and our students.
Absolutely.
So I would like to be able to have maybe suggested a task force. I would like to get all, or, or think about what this looks like, because I think it's more of a community, not just the school buildings, because we know it's an extension that's happening on your phones, when you're at your house. So I, I'd like to have it, or to have a suggestion that maybe have various stakeholders throughout the schools and the city come together with parents to find out what is working. Because we can say there's no tolerance, but if we don't know what's happening, what is the consequence? And I think this is the larger picture, because with COVID, we are so insular. And now going back to having these face-to-face discussions, it's a lot harder to have an insult face-to-face than it is when you're on social media. And I think this is just a, a tip of the iceberg, but I think this needs to be a constant conversation that we're continually having, not just a few events here or there.
If I can add to that, oh.
How goes, we'll go down the road.
Okay.
Great idea. I'd like to add staff into that mix.
What, what I was thinking is also, Dr. Maliko, tasking you with talking to other superintendents about what other districts are doing, because we know that this doesn't stop at our borders. You've talked about neighboring districts. We know that this goes on other places. What can we learn?
As I said earlier, I was very involved in this when the district first started working on it. And we got all kinds of churches and mosques and community organizations together. I mean, it was a huge, huge endeavor. And it really, again, like I said earlier, got the whole community kind of on the same page in learning the importance of this. And as trustee Watts says, COVID, not only did it separate us, but it also getting back to interacting with people, we're just not as comfortable as we used to be. And there's, there's walls and there's, you know, being online, like you said, it's easier to be disrespectful to somebody online. Well, if you've been doing that, and that kind of, if you've been doing that during COVID, and now you're getting back, and this goes for every member of society, now you're getting back to where you see people in person, you've got to reassess and kind of reset the way you interact with people, and a lot of people just aren't there yet. So, so just, there's a lot of things that encompass all of this that we need to look at. But when we did get the whole community involved, there were just droves of people interested, and it really became part of what this, this community stood for on every level. And so I think we do need to get back to that. And I do think that people are interested in getting involved and resetting that.
Trustee McDonald, I do recall too, because I was principal at the VALL, and we drove together to Lansing for that committee, if you recall, and some of the work you were doing.
Oh, absolutely.
When you were in the PTA, prior to you being on the board.
Yeah, that was prior to being on the board.
So the themes that I'm hearing keeps coming back to the students. What can we be doing to support the students, to reduce bullying, to support their education, make sure they've got a good environment? And that's where our attention really should always be. So thank you all for your input on this. Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, February 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, February 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, P-12 Board Study Sessions, 5:30 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, March 13th, 2023, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank, Frank Franchi Boardroom.
Everyone have a great evening. We are adjourned.